I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Monona for Tuesday, September 8th, 2015. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor, here.
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Bussie?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Space?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose name we will deliver our justice for all.
Again, if there's somebody who just came in who has not registered to speak at the public appearances, please do so. Item C is approval of the minutes of the August 3rd meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. The appearances section. We have three people here. First is Michelle Downer of 1717 West Broadway would like to register in favor of Resolution 15-9-2041, which I believe is the dementia-friendly. Yep. Just want to register in favor, correct? Next, we have Joy Schmidt, a dementia specialist with the, um, with ADRC of Dane County would like to speak in favor of the dementia-friendly community. Joy, if you would step to the podium to speak, if you would like to, because we have millions of viewers who are keenly aware.
Diane would speak first. All right.
We can do that if this was well rehearsed. It's up to you.
Okay, um, yeah, if that would be okay.
That would be fine. Um, except Diane never registered, but...
She's on the agenda.
Oh, on the agenda. Oh, okay. Oh, if you, if this, I'm sorry. You do not need to speak at this point in time, so we'll wait for the agenda. My, my mistake. Then, we'll move on to, if you haven't heard it, you have not been listening, to WVMO LP 98.7 on your radio dial. We have Mr. Lindsey Wood Davis, who would like to speak for informational purposes regarding WVMO radio. Welcome, Lindsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Lindsey Wood Davis of McKenna Road, appearing before you tonight in my role as Chair of Monona's Radio Committee. In its simplest form, my report to you is this: Monona has a radio station. On August 26th of 2015, the Federal Communications Commission issued a report and order granting WVMO of Monona, Wisconsin, a license to broadcast. Almost nine years ago, I appeared before this council to introduce the idea of Monona's own radio station. After some discussion, the council voted to support the idea with only Alder Jeff Wiswell standing in opposition. Mayor Bob Miller has been a supporter literally since day one, back in his baby Alder days. Alder Mary O'Connor, Chair of what is now the Community Media Committee of this council, really didn't know anything about radio station operations. After her battlefield education, she could probably lead seminars on the trials and travails of making a community radio station happen. We have had the benefit of a spectacular group of volunteers, from nationally-known pros to radio-obsessed newbies. The efforts of the many Mononans who understood this to be a chance to build a powerful voice for their community has been so gratifying. We bought top-notch professional broadcast equipment and built the beautiful studio that you pass each time you come into City Hall. The payoff for that is a station whose audio quality is fully competitive with the best radio stations in the state of Wisconsin. And that equipment and its professional installation will stand up to the rigors of ongoing volunteer use. Speaking of great volunteers, I would be remiss if I did not highlight the wonderful job being done by the only non-volunteer in our group, and he's left the building, so I'm sorry he's not here, and that's our city's media coordinator, Will Nimmo. What a home run Will Nimmo has been. When time comes for Will's salary review, I hope you keep in mind the fabulous job that he has done for our city.
Thanks.
And as, yeah, sorry, I had to do it. And as Will tackles the very difficult task and challenge of bringing Monona TV up-to-date, I know he'll be just as successful there. We're blessed to have him. Please continue to give him your support. We've had great response to our initial few weeks on the air. But while most radio stations go on the air sounding like they're supposed to with fully-developed programming and sound, WVMO isn't like that. We'll continue to intensely develop people and programming elements as we move forward. One of the most common promotional lines you'll hear on WVMO is, "Tune in often and listen to us grow." That's not puffery, that's a promise. As we develop new ideas, hone our capabilities, both personal and technical, and, most importantly, execute all that, you'll be able to hear us continue to morph into a more and more effective voice of Monona. And that's been the whole idea of this effort, from that first day, almost nine years ago, when Paul Meyer of Shore Acres Road called me from the parking lot at Walgreens and said, "Hey, Lindsey, do you think Monona could get one of those LP FM's?" Thanks to all of you for your continued support of this idea, and now, this reality, at 98.7, WVMO, the voice of Monona. Thank you so much.
Please join me in thanking Lindsey. Lindsey, just a couple of questions are coming up. The over-the-air signal is astounding, and the quality is perfect. Any update on streaming? The world, the world can't wait to hear...
And we get no, I think that, we get that question more than all others combined, just so you know, the interest in this. And the interest is both local and national. I have a lot of broadcast friends who say, "When are you going to stream so we can listen?" But the Americana programming, which, the whole idea of which is to suck people into this station, will have a good national base of listenership, just so everybody isn't surprised come a year from now. You'll be, you'll have some good listenership. So we are, to use the line from that great Jim Carrey movie, Waiting for the Cable Guy, we discovered back in early June, which is the month we thought we would start streaming, using it like spring training and using it for practice, that the capabilities that we need and the capabilities that the city has, it's not that the city doesn't have capabilities, city has wonderful capabilities and a great firewall. That firewall turned out to be a problem for what we need. So we discovered we needed our own fiber-optic line. We ordered it in the middle of June. We were told by Charter that it would be here between June and August 24th. It's the 8th of September. We're still waiting for the cable guy. At some point, I would like Will Nimmo to turn to our city attorney and fire some stun grenades in their direction, because we need a little bit of help with that. As soon as we can, we will. Important note, this sounds like I'm only talking about streaming. I talked about the professional, high-quality broadcast equipment that we bought. Nobody buys analog equipment today. If they can avoid it, they buy all digital equipment. And that's what we did. Our remote equipment, all our remotes, with the single exception of football games from Monona Grove High School alone, all our remote capabilities are based on digital technology. The inability for us to simply record a song from a disc, from an LP, to digital and get it into our system, we can't do it. We are, our emergency alert system, our seven-second delay, all of those things are digital, and all of them are awaiting this. So you'll all know that we're doing it when we announce that we're streaming, but also understand there are many other things that we will be doing once we have that as well. And if you note in here, I talked about building up our personal capabilities and our technical capabilities. Once we get those in, then we have to learn to use all that equipment. So it won't be overnight, but it will happen. It will happen. I don't know what else to say.
Will being a key term.
Will being a key term, both with a capital and without.
Adverb.
Any other questions, folks?
Thank you very much, and a nice...
Thank you all very much.
The media has fallen in love, so tomorrow's newspaper, you'll see a very wonderful article that Lindsey, Will, and staff are featured in. If you can't wait, you can go online. I think Madison.com has it all ready tonight. And those of you who are part of the Goodman Center, the Jingle Gals, who do our promos, one of the Jingle Gals, Margot wrote a very nice compliment, so we're getting tremendous coverage. And the one thing, I don't think we fully realize what we're getting with this, and it really hit home in its reference. I shared this quote with the reporter in the Cap Times, was two weeks ago, after a meeting, after CDA meeting, I was pulling in the garage and I was listening to 98.7 now.
Thank you.
And I heard this real interesting dialogue going on with the home, with homeless people. And I thought, well, we must have acquired some national programming or something. And so I listened, and it was very interesting, and all of a sudden, I heard the announcer go, "Well, we need to take a break to promote WVMO, the voice of..." And I'm like, "Whoa!" So I turned around, pulled out of the garage, came at 10 o'clock at night, I think, whatever night of the week that was.
That's right.
Came in, and we had five homeless people having the most wonderful dialogue, debate, not always agreeing. And so Will was there, 10 o'clock at night, giving up of his time to help them do radio. And I cornered Will and said, "What's this about? I didn't know these people." And he said, "A gentleman came in and asked if we could post..." He calls himself the Homeless Comedian, and they had an event coming up. And Will, to his credit, said, "Rather than post it, why don't you do a show?" So now we have this, and Will's getting it digitized, so that, those of you who may have missed it, but that was one of those nights that made me proud to be in this city, that we have that kind of dialogue going on and that kind of... So this radio station, I can't thank staff, Mary, you know, again, it's so true, you got thrown right into the fire on this, so...
It was fun, though.
It's been an amazing thing. So stay tuned, it'll only get better by the day. So thank you so much.
Tune in often and listen to us grow.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? If not, I'll close the, um, declare the appearances section closed. There's no public hearing this evening. Item F is our consent agenda. Item 1 is approval of applications for 2015-16 operator licenses. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of those applications has taken place. Item 2 is approval of applications for 2015 through 2017 operator licenses. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those applications have been approved. Item 3 is approval of applications for a temporary operator's license for the Allee Hold Nature Center. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The licenses have all been approved. There is no unfinished business this evening. Moving on to new business, item 2A. If it's okay with this body, could we move that to the bottom of the agenda so we could take care of our guests this evening? Hearing no quibble with that, we will do that. So moving to item 2C is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2D. Oh, I'm sorry, 2D. Have to go one more. And you'll notice starred for immediate...
He can go to E if he's not...
What is D?
E is the guest.
E is the guest. We'll accommodate the, we're rushing you right to the front of the bus, which is free this week, I might add, if you care to use it. Item E is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2041, expressing the city of Monona's commitment toward becoming dementia-friendly, brought forth by the Senior Citizens Commission. Our astound, renowned director, Diane.
So a few months ago, a group of motivated professionals, community members, and volunteers started meeting with the idea of doing some, taking some tasks and making some goals to try to make Monona a more dementia-friendly community. We are dedicated to helping both those who are dealing with dementia and their caregivers just feel more comfortable, whether it's in a business or having services provided to them in our community. We know Monona has a large senior community, and our residents like to stay here as long as they possibly can. Many of us have been touched by dementia, either somebody you know or somebody who's a caregiver, and it's not an easy road to, to sew. So if there's anything that we can do in our community to make things easier, whether it's training our businesses to recognize people with dementia or their caregivers and helping them along to make it an easier process, or training PD, department heads, this could go citywide, looking for ways to make things better for people with dementia. Looking at the steps that we're taking, we're currently building our coalition to include the aspects that we feel are important and still missing, and the people that are meeting. We'll participate in a Train the Trainer session on September 22nd. That's a two-hour training where all of us who have been meeting, that can meet, will meet right in this room, and we'll learn a little bit more about how we can go forth and educate the community. Next, we'll address engaging the community through presentations and programs and build awareness while we work on providing this various training to businesses in our area for both businesses and the services that we provide. So the resolution that you have in front of you was created by this committee, and we will continue to meet and keep you updated on the steps that we're taking with, with this movement. And you might have heard in other communities in Dane County, this movement has been going on for some time. It's relatively new, but kind of blossoming very quickly across the country. Minnesota's been very, kind of a forerunner and a good example for Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin has developed an actual handbook or a toolkit for communities that are looking to do the same thing, so we have some, some footprints to follow and some, some work to do going forward. But this, we decided was one of our first steps, was to get the backing of our city and keeping you updated on our progress.
Would you like this to be a formal proclamation, with the frame and the whole thing, that, our declaration of our support, if this body so desires to support this?
Whatever you feel is most appropriate.
It's your call typically. We, we get asked, we don't honor all requests, because we get asked every week for, to proclaim something, but this, if this body does support this, I would be more than happy to turn this into a formal proclamation.
Okay.
And then I also urge, as you had heard from the last speaker, Lindsey, that we're waiting for the digital hookup for our emergency alert services, but that's where you really need to get engaged with Larry Reed and Will. Silver alerts are far surpassing amber alerts for emergency alert services, and it seems like there's not a week that goes by without a silver alert, so I think your timeliness is very appropriate on this. Questions of Diane? If not, then I'll go back to, oh, I'm sorry, Alder Thomas?
Just a general comment. I was, I was very pleasantly surprised to learn of some of my friends who were going to sit with someone who had dementia to provide respite.
For the caregiver.
For the caregiver.
Absolutely.
And I would hope that that would be a part of this outreach effort, because I know there are people who would do it if they knew where, when, how, what.
Right. And one example might be even if the caregiver is with the person who they're providing care for in a grocery store, and that person with dementia is agitated, somebody who just has the training to spend a moment with that person while the caregiver finishes a transaction. It's real simple things, but that make a huge difference, especially in those caregivers' lives, and make it more comfortable for those dealing with dementia. And so Joy Schmidt is the one who actually planted the seed. So she brought this idea to us at the time she was with the Alzheimer's and Dementia Alliance, and now with the ADRC of Dane County. And she's been doing this around the area, just kind of planting the seed, saying, "Here's the idea, now go forth and make flowers with that, with that seed." So Joy, if you want to talk a little bit about your experience?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to Diane. She's a wonderful leader. You guys are lucky to have her here in Monona, so I'm so excited to be working with her and with the group that she has formed. They've made some great strides already. I had the honor to work with a number of communities in Dane County to help them become dementia-friendly. This is an initiative that started in the UK and spread to Australia, and Wisconsin is one of the first states in the United States to really jump onto this idea, because the numbers of people living with dementia in our state alone, currently about 120,000 people, they're expecting those numbers to at least double, potentially triple by the year 2050. So this is something for providing businesses increased awareness, but providing for those who are taking care of someone with dementia. By increasing the awareness, hopefully we'll be making more services available, connecting people who can offer respite services to individuals. And so not only the state of Wisconsin, but Dane County, the Aging and Disability Resource Center believes in this, and that's why we're here to support this initiative here in Monona and in other counties. So I feel really fortunate to be working with such a great group of folks and work together to help the citizens in your community stay independent as long as possible and get the supports that they need to provide care for people living with dementia.
So is dementia an umbrella term over Alzheimer's? Is Alzheimer's part of a dementia program?
Right. Alzheimer's disease is the primary disease, the number-one disease that causes dementia, but dementia is a general term. There are a number of other diseases that cause dementia, Alzheimer's being the primary. It's progressive, it's degenerative, and there is no cure. So it's finding supports for people living with it, finding hope in at least living a high quality of life as long as possible.
Questions? Alder Thomas?
Well, as long as they're all here, is there a reason why we can't pass this tonight? And if you want to do something formal, you could move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules, take this out of order? Is there a second? There's a motion and second. Is there a discussion on that point? Hearing none. All those in favor suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval of this resolution? Oh, before we do that, I just want to note, there were two other speakers. Michelle Downer wanted to register in favor, and our own Sally Buffett wanted to register in favor also. Is there a motion for approval of this resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries resoundingly. Thank you very much for your interest and care about doing this. Congratulations, and thank you for those of you who attended. All right, since I am suffering from all kinds of dementias here, trying to figure out where we are now, do we want to go? All right, let's return back to item 2A, which is convening in closed session under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 per N1 per NG, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved in. This is the settlement with clinky cleaners. Is there a motion to convene in closed session?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion, second, convene in closed session. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Space?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
All right, this should be about 10 minutes. 19.85 per N2. Item C, you'll notice starred for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2045, authorizing a settlement with clinky cleaners. Is there a motion, is there a second? There's a motion, second, suspend the rules, take this item out of order. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, second, for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Space?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item D, again, starred for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2046, correcting the resolution approving Tax Incremental District Number 9. Motion, suspend the rules?
So move.
Is there a second? Motion, second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
City Attorney Cole?
Thanks, Mayor. These resolutions are very specific as to the statute and the procedure. This resolution was prepared, for whatever reason, when it was brought before you a couple months ago. This resolution wasn't put in the pack, and a different resolution was. Nobody seems to know why. Given the amount at stake and the specificity of the statute, I thought it more appropriate to cure the defect and have you pass the precise statute.
Move approval. Is there a motion and second to approve this consideration? Is there discussion? Any questions? I think it was just a simple clerical error, and there's no concern that, at Board of Review, that it gets us to the same place just a couple weeks later.
It doesn't change anything substantial.
Doesn't change anything.
It just adds words, findings.
Their meeting tomorrow to approve it? Okay. All right. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2A is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2047, authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 of taxable tax incremental, increment project revenue bonds. This is for TID Number 9, brought forth by the Finance Record. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, suspend the rules, take this out of order. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Mark?
Yeah, this is the refinancing of the Chase Bank loan. Basically, it's coming due this month. We're going with Monona State Bank, who we initially borrowed the money with. We're changing the type of bonding from general obligation to a tax increment revenue bond. What this does, which is very important, it takes it off the debt limit, this type of bond, this type of revenue bond. So now it frees up $1.5 million inner debt limit. So right now, we have a debt limit capacity of about $9 million with this taken out. And so this, the revenues is paid back by the revenue bonds of the Tax Incremental District. This is a three-year note. Why is it a three-year note? Because this, we haven't received any, really haven't really started receiving any income from TIF Number 9 yet, so we are going to be paying from the interest, from the Chase Bank rental income, and then in three years, once we get a good cash flow stream, we can refinance into a long-term debt. But until we, until the projects get going, this is the best way to go, and it's 3.1 interest rate, which is a very good rate considering this is taxable, and it's fairly comparable to our last borrowing that we had with Jeff Bollongi.
Yes?
Mark, so the source of funds to pay for these monthly payments comes out of the revenue generated by the Chase Bank?
Yes. The interest.
Seeing no further, or hearing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Space? Alder Space.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
Alder Holquist.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item H is reports of committees, commissions, boards, and staff. Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spade?
Well, I just want to mention that, as you noted earlier, the Transit Commission is promoting our services and I did bring one of the signs that the public will be seeing around the community. The primary reason that we declared next week Transit Week is to say thank you to the community for ongoing increased ridership of our transit services and also to, of course, simultaneously promote those services to citizens who may not know about them. What we're essentially doing is during next week, from the 14th to the 18th, there will be no fares collected on the buses. It'll be literally a free ride for all those who care to join us. So we invite the community to come check us out and take a ride to work if you work downtown or at any of the hospitals, anywhere really on the loop around Lake Manona. It's an excellent rush hour service.
Schools.
And the schools also, yes, the high school in particular. There are some students that could very easily make use of that service based on the timing of it, so we hope to... Do we still have the app so we can follow, so you can see where the bus is, so you don't have to wait a long time? That's correct. Yes, thank you. There is an app that you can download onto any smartphone or iPhone and it will show you exactly where the buses are located and that way, if you're running a little late, you'll know whether the bus is also running late. It's a great tool that is commonly used by millennials and those of us that are a little older are having to figure it out, but it is a great resource when you rely on transit. That's the website and getting the information? Yes, if you go to mymanona.com/express, that will take you to our express rush hour scheduling and then, of course, there's also information on the website about the lift, which is during the day. So we hope the community will come out and check us out.
Good job. Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Holquist?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
No report.
Alder? Ah, no report, Mayor. Attorney Cole?
Ah, no, Mayor.
City Clerk?
We just completed a four-year maintenance of voter registration records and we're only missing four, so I'm going to be following up with those registrants and that's four out of 6,000, so I thought that was pretty good. And that's done every, actually four years for voters, it's done every two years for me after every general election. And also I'll be utilizing the radio station to make an announcement about the new law for photo voter ID. So hopefully people will be listening to the station and getting some information. I'll be getting some phone calls, I hope.
Perfect. And you might note that we have a much taller person sitting next to the mayor at city council meetings. Our city finance director, Mark Hotaker, has willingly and gladly accepted the additional responsibility of serving as acting city administrator while the search for new administrators is undergoing, so congratulations and thank you for your willingness to take on these additional responsibilities. Anything you want to report?
Just a couple, a couple things. For your committees, look for the operating budget, should be, for your next meeting, should see an operating budget. And we just got all the capital information in, so we'll be going over that committee-wise, I mean, council-wise in October. The budget will be in November.
Do you know, will we be having special meetings for those budget discussions or will those be part of our regular council meetings?
Well, it's up to you, but I think last year we went to a separate because it was felt the year before when we tried to do it all in one. It's your call, but last year we separated them.
You did a committee of hold, just passed one day, you guys went to it the same day as your council.
And hopefully I should be able to give you a hint, I'm just getting the first blushes today. And once again, at least on the capital, there's so many contingencies upon TIP requests and things like that. So right now, I don't know what I'm thinking until we know how some other things unfold. But we did have some growth in the city, which is good, never as much as we hope, but at least our equities revenue and then by doing some other changes. Financially, we're looking good, but there's some variables that are going to take a couple weeks to really figure out what the impact of that is. So again, thank you, Mark. One thing referencing, it's been shared, Little Bird has shared with me some concerns from some council members in terms of the process of selection of the new city administrator. I just want to make sure everyone understands, all I did was once again pick up the same process that was used to hire city administrator Marsh, where Mayor Call at that time appointed an ad hoc committee, search committee, which met separately from the council at large. And I'm just trying to emulate the same process. It seemed to work well the last time, so it was not my intent in any shape, manner, form, not that, you know, I tried to have a younger council member and a seasoned council member serve and try to get a mix of citizens. So that process, and then once we get it narrowed down to the 10 or whatever number the consultant feels is worth perusal, we'll bring that forth through this body for overall. And that process is underway as we speak. Alder Spade?
And could you just extrapolate on that a little bit, like, so that committee that you've formed, they will be doing what exactly and?
That, so the position has been posted, surveys have been taken of, you should have all filled out the survey, you received it and the ad hoc committee in terms of prioritization, what you as an individual felt are the goals in that person, so the top five attributes that you would look for. That was put together then to place an ad in whatever periodicals, I'm not sure exactly where that ad's been placed, but that's been placed. Deadline is this coming week. The Ashkosh Search Firm then will provide the entire list if I want to see it or whatever, but what we did last time is bring it down to 10 to a dozen with intimate knowledge. They do the pre-screening, not the final screening, but the pre-screening on reference checking. And as I remembered in the last time, that was probably what I felt was the major strength. They really seem to know the story behind these individuals and I found that to be very beneficial. I hope that continues. The only thing they've shared with me, because I forget how many for Pat's position had been brought forth, but I remembered we, there were a ton and, you know, they took it down to, I think, 10 for that. And I assumed it would be even better now because the city's even better than it was eight years ago. They said they've done seven placements this year and they had not received as many in the last few as they normally would expect. They were a Door County position and an Oneida County position, so very different in the dynamics, you know, of where. So I don't know if they're just hedging their bets not to overpromise and underdeliver. So I still think we're going to get a lot and just time again, I'm hearing through the grapevine, we'll be receiving some in-house applicants too.
It's the 18th.
The 18th, yeah.
It's the 22nd.
Anything else, Alder Spade?
No, thank you.
Alder Thomas?
Do we know anything about the timeline? The reason I ask is because it's my grandson's birthday and I'm planning a trip to...
Yeah, we do, I don't have it, I apologize right now to you.
I don't have it.
But it's pretty, I mean, it's not carved in stone in case we don't get enough and we have to reengage, but it goes all the way, so hopefully offers being written by end of October, early November. So I would expect we have city administrator on board prior to Christmas.
So when do we, when will we know when we will be involved with interviewing them?
I think we have that schedule, I just don't have it. We do have that schedule, so, yeah. Would you make sure they could send out to everyone? Again, with the flexibility that if there's shortcomings at any step in the way, we'll reopen, but, yeah.
Can you say it the same schedule that Leah sent three or four weeks ago?
Yep, yep. Should be. I mean, I think she only sent one that I know. There was some concern about it being delayed because people weren't filling out the surveys and I just said, you know, they missed it. If you didn't fill out the survey, we moved on without you because I did not think that was going to shape the job description. Wasn't going to revolutionize the job description without, so some people did not fill out the survey, but I didn't want to hold up the process. I'm as anxious as any of you to get somebody in. All right, then.
When will we know what the budget schedule is?
Capital, I would think this week in terms of the meetings. Operating...
It'll be November.
Yeah, it'll be...
The council will come to the actual council the first and third week of November for the actual bill.
Okay.
Because I don't know the status of all the committees, if the committees have all met to go over that, because I don't want to have budgets that have not gone through the committee process.
But it's November, not October.
On operating. Capital will be in October.
October, yeah.
First to second meeting.
If it's two reads, well, first and the third, yep. First, the first and the third Monday, so the first is, both meetings in October will have that cap on.
It's going to be hard on that first one, it's going to be, but hopefully. It's CDA meetings, important CDA meeting. All right, were you done?
Yeah.
Then I just had two notes. This is something, I wish I got more of these kind of emails than the ones I normally get every day, but there's two emails that I received that I just want to note tonight that I think speak well for our staff and for all of you and what we do. The first is from former Alder Dennis Kugel. The title was City Infrastructure Work and it's just short. It's, "Bob, please pass on to the city council, public works committee, and public work staff. The great job Manona has done this year improving the city's infrastructure. All the great road repair work, pavement markings, and now all the stormwater upgrades to help improve water quality. Whoever planned and implemented all of these improvements should be commended. I don't mean to leave out the great shape all of the parks and the park structures are in either. Good work and thanks for all of your efforts." So thank you all and I would ask that you get that however you want to spread that. And then this was one I received late last week from Carol Sorensen, little bit longer, but I'll cut it down. This was regarding Manona Emergency Service. "Bob, my husband Keith Sorensen became very ill. Manona emergency team came and took him to St. Mary's. Six days later, he was discharged home. We stayed in a lower-level bedroom to make it easier for the team in case they had to come in again, which they did a day and a half after he came home. They so gently transferred him back to St. Mary's. Another six days in the hospital, he was to start discharged home again. Again, we stayed in the lower level. First day, Home Health United came, said he needed to go to hospice. Tuesday, he was admitted to hospice. Wednesday, the nurse came back and said he had less than a month to live. Thursday, she came back and said he may not make it even through this weekend. I said I'd like him upstairs. He doesn't think he's home in the downstairs. They tried all four noon that Friday to get someone to transfer him to our upper main floor. I kept saying, 'Call Manona.' They finally did. Manona emergency team came in five minutes later. They asked why they were moving Keith upstairs. I said he was not going to live through the weekend and he wanted to be upstairs, so bad to die. They were so very, very compassionate. They told me they would take care of him and get him upstairs. They did so and so very gently. Then they gave me a hug and said, 'No charge. Only our local team has the compassion and love for their community that others don't have in bigger cities. I called them the other day because I wanted to make a donation in Keith's name. They said, 'You know, we sure could use more volunteers.' I asked how I could help with that and they said, 'Contact our mayor.' And then she gave me some, some requests on that, but she did indeed make a... Keith died very quickly and I think it's one of those that, what makes us different and that willingness. And I talked to the staff, to the Chief Sullivan and the gang to thank and they all went over there and this is, this is cool. So again, you are to be commended for operating the city and that we hire people like that. So that's the end of my reports. We have some appointments tonight, some guy by the name of Spade, who's signing up to be the zoning board of appeals alternate, Matt Arrow to the facilities committee and Rick Berenstein to the landmarks commission. Is there a motion for approval of these appointments? There's a motion, is there a second? Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move adjournment, second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.